What's on your agenda? What do you do?
Is K L M represented by the... Is the K L M represented by that gentleman that was here six or seven months ago?
No, Missouri Engineering.
Yeah.
We do Missouri Engineering for years and years. He knows everything about water lines, sewer lines, every shut-off valve. He knows everything about our system, high 49%. He's a... These all of the people may be good, but they don't know our system. I don't even know them. I don't... He's cool. Y'all got to... You gotta go in there. You got... Go work at your place.
Well, April, did you look at it?
I didn't see anything. Neither one of them didn't bring anything up. So, I looked, but I didn't... I didn't think they would have anything. I mean, they didn't even have a rating.
And are these guys coming up because we need to select from different companies now? Or...
They're wanting us to... Where do you know?
To rate them?
Yeah, hard to rate them. I don't know who's...
You call them.
Wait, let's say...
I just think they'll put Missouri Engineering, because, I mean, they know...
They know our system. Plus, they know what they're doing. And everything they do, so...
They've been engineering for over nine years?
I'm sure all these engineers aren't good, but it takes them years to get the knowledge to set it up. Missouri Engineering already got that.
And are there financial estimates for each of... I mean, are they... Are they going through the system to check it or to replace?
This is...
This is the standard?
Well, this is part to do with that grant that we're trying to get for gravity feed and everything.
Yeah.
And we got an engineer. And Missouri Engineering's been working on it for over a year.
Yeah. But this is just for...
I mean, they know our system, too. That's, you know, bless her health.
You just had to get the two extra, probably two extra. You probably had three, you know, qualifying engineers to do it.
And is the... The determinants of who to select? I mean, obviously, one has more experience with us, but is it financial? Is it both financial or professional? I'm assuming both, right?
Okay, I don't know. I'm not the one that did the grant. David's the one that had the grant set up. I need to ask him that.
Frankie, have you worked with any of these guys?
I worked with Charlie Ray and Joe Heavely. And they do do a good job on their engineering, you know, expertise. I do know that Charlie Ray and Joe Heavely turned it around and they designed phases for this grant to happen. So, they already know how our system is laid out and how many grinders, how many shut-offs we're supposed to have and stuff like that. So...
So, they're kind of vested in...
Yeah, so if you bring another company in, it's gonna cost more in engineering firm, because they're gonna have to go through and do blueprints on the city. Of knowing where all the valves and everything are gonna be located and all that. In which Charlie Ray can actually pull up a map right now if I call in and say, hey, I need to know where this valve is and tell me exactly where it's at. So, it's... Thing, I mean, they've been here since the late 70s, early 80s of putting in this stuff, so...
Yeah. And are the... Like, the new guys, are they obligated to generate their own set of blueprints for the city? Or they just go by whatever...
So, they... They're the ones who engineered all of our mapping that we have now. They're the ones who put all the GPS coordinates and everything in for them. When this takes effect, they'll do all that, turn around after it's been put in, the measurements and everything. So, I'd rather just see us stick with them, because they already know our system. Another way, we ain't sitting here costing us out the butt for engineering firm costs and...
I don't know how they want you to get this going and do it. I don't know. I've never seen them do it before. I was gonna say that.
Me, though, I...
I mean, I don't know what they want you to say or not say. How you score something when you don't even know what the hell. But I do know about Charlie Ray and Missouri Engineering.
Now, the other thing with this grant, and that's another thing that'd have to be asked to Joe Heavely or Charlie Ray. With the grant system, this is, and which I don't know exactly how it's set up, but if they are actually in that grant system of the engineering firm. If they're coming. And that's the other reason why these other two could've got pulled off to show, you know, here, because they're with that system or this grant opportunity. The other thing is, is it probably have to be wrote up by the mayor. You guys turn around, we wanna keep our own engineering firm that we already have. And, I mean, Charlie Ray's gonna know more about that than I will. I mean, I'm half our...
And these other guys, do we... Are they gonna... Are they currently... Do you know submitting a proposal, like, we wanna do your system and it's gonna cost you this and this?
Well, they want the job.
They want the job.
Did you get the report? They want you to fill out...
These three...
They want you to fill out the information, everything out, and send it to them before we start to do the surveys and do everything, so...
Yeah, we got good credentials, but Charlie Ray know our...
Right.
Know our water, our sewer, the new addition. He laid all that out. He played our cemetery out for us. He knows everything about St. Mary's and half for the church. We've never had no problem. I don't know how you rank them. Either one of them might be as good as the other. But we can't afford to teach them all that Charlie knows.
Do everything we already got done, yeah.
Now, I don't know any other way to put it. I don't know how they wanna score. But I could call Charlie Ray right now on the phone and he would answer me. And I could ask him about it up there on the east street to set up, but I would need to tell me which valve... Almost... Oh, sometimes I had to go to a mess. They shut off to shut that down. And you can't, you know, that... That thing take away the people.
Right.
But they gotta learn all that. Charlie's been here for...
Yeah, well, I mean, if we're evaluating it for the purposes of grants, then the grant, you know, the people that are reviewing what we're doing or, you know, are assessment. You know, we have to demonstrate that we've looked over the professional experience without the actual experience. Like I mentioned, stated Charlie Ray has already been here and done his homework, you know, in terms of the blueprints and the setup and stuff like that.
And there's... There's blueprints made, because this grant actually was supposed to be started three or four, five weeks ago. Anyway, it was brought up to my attention from B N R, finances and stuff, how we go through grant system and stuff. And that's when it was actually supposed to be starting to be set up. So, Charlie Ray, what he did, and Joe Heavely, they made blueprints of the cost and what phases that would take place to do this. There was three different phases to take care of it. And the one was like, I think, three million dollars on one of the phases. Now, it's putting in the lift station and stuff. That's the most costliest part. So, in my eyes, I'd rather stay with somebody that's already got a blueprint of a phase or is stuck together on this. Because he actually knows the grade, the GPS coordinates of all the grinders and how, what kinda, you know, can you gotta have at least a 4% grade on your gravity feed. So anyways, I'm like, he's gonna know the grade marks and everything already of what he's putting in the ground.
And since he's done that, like, I mean, you know, like, when you pull up records on someone, you go, okay. Even, you know, if it happens to be like cartography for maps and stuff like that. Are... Is each of these new engineering firms, are they obligated for their... Since they're, you know, they want to work, do they have to, like, go in and start all the way over?
So basically, yeah. So basically, what they're gonna have to do is all these is what Charlie Ray may have kind of Joe Heavely. The second bad idea is, is they would have, the new firm would have to come in and get all these coordinates, which that's gonna take more time, more cost.
They don't do it from that...
No. Anyways, when you're looking at probably, you know, anywhere from $80 to $90 an hour, you know, or more, for them, just them to come in and do GPS coordinates. Anyway, so you're better off to save a firm that we've already dealt with for years, so...
And just for the publicists that are viewing this, or maybe, the upgrades in the system, what are they gonna be?
So, the upgrades in the system, we're gonna do a gravity feed. And most of there. Anyway, which that's gonna take out a lot of cost of the grinders, lecture to old owners. Anyways, I mean, that's basically what it's gonna do.
Rebuilding these grinders probably as much as any of it.
Yeah.
But it's all going to stay in steel. The ones that we keep, the lift stations and the old grinders will all be things that still rise and dang and new pumps and air pump. That would be the biggest, I imagine, the gravity feed. It would be expensive, but it wouldn't be nothing to say what's there to build all these sewer lines.
Change in technology, I mean, we're still gonna have grinders, right?
You're gonna have to have grinders in the flood area, the low on areas where you can't get a 4% grade.
Yeah.
Because of that case, you're gonna have to dig 20-foot deep just to get a grade.
One more thing, any gravity blow feed, Trifum has grinding lift stations. They know this thing. They have a whole city without having a lift station somewhere. So, you gotta raise that up. It can't be downhill all the way.
Yeah. And then the... So, we're going to stainless steel, so we don't have to deal with corrosion and stuff like that.
Definitely. It's a year for anything that messes up.
Okay.
But stainless steel, it only lives a lifetime. It just... You can take a hundred years and it's still stainless steel, you know? Wipe it off and the rock will come up. It don't rust, it don't do anything.
Well, it'll rust some, but not to the really other stuff.
But it's a...
It will last a lifetime.
I got a big thing that's still been laying out there in my yard for five years. Four foot square, and it's... Well, I think it's on a new figure. But it looked just as good the day it remained there. It wouldn't have got...
Yeah, but that's rain versus feces year and...
And then, and then what's...
Stainless steel does not rust, period.
Well, the...
You can wipe it off. If it get on there, it'll shine off. It don't pick. Now, stainless steel don't pick.
Well, does... I worked in a steel factory for five...
With real stainless steel, it don't pick.
Okay.
But, I mean, with the...
Hey, longer lasting.
With lift station and stuff that they're talking about putting in on the phases or whatever, it's basically gonna be tower lift station. I don't know if you've ever been to St. Jen and actually seen the lift station down on Front Street by the community hall. It's below flood stage. So, that's basically what part of it's gonna be. That's a lot of cost 'cause of concrete, so...
Where is that gonna be located?
Well, by the mapping of what they did the proposal on, one was actually gonna be right across the river here in the bay. And then it'll take... Another one's gonna be down at the other end of town to push to the sewer pump. So anyway, but that all might be a different effect on how much the grant system is actually gonna afford. Because like Charlie Ray said before, we might not be able to do all three phases at one time. It might be one or two phases of it. And then, you know, and then keep going on after that, so...
And do we have a timeline, like pressure on us to commit and do stuff within, like, three months or a year?
So basically, when this grant is, and I don't know how long this grant or if we got the grant or however it's set up, but you're... They're gonna have a timeline of when this is all gonna take place.
One is that... Is that where the timeline is?
Yeah. Anyways, anyways, the other thing is, is whenever the engineering firm comes in and actually set points and everything and what's going on. The companies that we hired, and we couldn't decide, couldn't we? We hired to put this in. But they're gonna be the ones who decides that, and they're gonna say, you got, you know, three months to get this put in.
The grant, right?
Yeah.
Well, our... Would be take out all the contractors and set them up. We... They go to our engineer, the contractors have to pay to get it.
Basically, everything is gonna take effect with the engineering company. The engineering company's gonna be sitting right here and saying, these are where the contractors put the bid. And you guys decide which one, what quality work and everything. And then they'll give you their advice of which ones are the qualities that'll be, you know, work in it.
You guys know how to grade these. I want to see him do it. Go ahead. What's that?
Rating?
I don't know why they want them rated.
And Missouri Engineering, they put in the last, when they were redoing the water lines and stuff like that, are they the guys that did it or...
So, the engineering company is the one who had our contractor come in, went through the shots under it, to put in the water system. So, the engineering company keeps an eye on if everything's being done right, footage wise and everything. That's what their job is to do, to make sure all the GPS coordinates are in place of where the valve is supposed to be. And if anything's messed up, this all goes back on the engineering company. It's not on personally our stuff. So, it's a... If we got market somebody, that's who we're bargaining, you know, so...
And the engineering company, will they have... I thought I heard you say that the engineering company will have two or three contractors that you can pick from to do a given component of the...
Yeah, so what... So, what happened is, is the engineering company sets this all up, they get the blueprints, we send out bids. Say you'll do that for us. They will send the bids out to different contractors. Contractors that they know that can do the job, can get the job done, and manage the whole column and everything and everything in the specs. So, what... They will come down and they will actually look at the area. The contractors will, they will give their submission of how much money they're gonna charge. And then it will come from the contractors back to the engineering firm, and then Charlie Ray or Joe Heavely will be out here to give the proposal of what, you know, it's gonna cost and how many days.
And that... The company that provides the funds for the grants or... Are they the ones that... Do they have an overview over that and how it's...
They'll have an overview too. Everybody that's in on this is gonna have an overview of the point.
And do they give the final say so on it or do we or...
Well, however the grant is set up, how much of the money that that grant can give. Turn around, they will be the ones who does the final. This is how much money you guys are getting. Then we will turn around and as project management, when they're around, we will say, this is the phases we want done. And then all that money has to be used up from that grant for that phase, for the phase.
What's the projected timeline from beginning to completion of the project on...
Probably a year, two years.
Yeah, so I think two years.
These are questions that were asked, they had to be moved by the engineer once it's set up, all the timeline, same...
Yeah, I'm not...
No idea.
Yeah, and they're the ones who's gonna be able to confirm how many months, years, days it's gonna take, you know? We can just take it for instance, like St. Jen, whenever we're doing our water... One project up there on Forest Street, it was 45-day project. Anyways, which was two days under, but turn around, still, they got a timeline if they want it done, you know? And if they can't achieve that, then that's the engineer dealing with contractors on that part.
Right. And how... How many active grinders can we have?
We got 100 and... 194 that's actually in the ground. I...
One, one left now.
Yeah, one less. But we got actually probably 162. 162 hookups that's actually active. So anyways, I mean, and then you guys turn around and take your effect in on your lift stations up at the subdivision, which we got two big lift stations up there. Whenever our feed system is there. So, whenever this is all taking effect, them lift stations are gonna be put in the process to push some... That way, we don't have problems down the road with them.
Right. Okay. So, so you have, let's say, 170 grinders, and then they replace the lines between grinders?
So, whatever is actually capable of being gravity fed, which I don't know the whole proposal of how it's set up now, so beforehand when it's set up. Anything that is on the hill or out of the flood plain to get the 4% grade is gonna be engineered from the house, from the slidewell, to be put on an eight-inch sewer, gravity-fed sewer, I mean, with manhole. Anyway, anything that's on the flood plain or down in the lower part, like Carl's down here. That's all gonna still be pushed by force to the gravity fed or to the big lift station, however they decide to set that up.
And do those eight-inch lines have to all be replaced or just in...
They don't have no eight-inch lines in the ground at all. So, there's five miles of pipe and pad.
We got gravity feed out there in the new addition.
Yeah. Yeah, we got eight-inch out there on the gravity fed. That's all gravity fed out there.
But in the other areas, do you have to pull, replace the existing...
You'd have to put new launch up to the road, new, and tie in the laddles. So, basically, what would have to happen is grinder pit, if it's gonna be able to be gravity fed, grinder pit comes out, turn around, laddle hooks in, and drop into the main of a new main whenever it's all replaced. Which your main's gonna be put in before your laddle or...
What, like up by me on... We're used to it on Third Street. It looks like the grinders are almost three feet lower than the road is.
Yeah.
So, is that...
And that's gonna take, take on depth-wise. That's what engineering purpose is for. If we're in there to figure out how much, how much depth we gotta have to get that 4% grade from the house to the main and down to the rest station. Because if you don't do at least 4% grade, if you do anything less, if you do anything anymore, your water, your liquid is gonna overcome your solids, and then you're gonna have problems in your main. And then if it's the other way around, you're just gonna build settlement up in the pipe, and then you're just gonna have problems. So, they have to make sure they get that 4% grade, turn around, to flow right, so...
Right.
It's part of their engineers. That's really why we... Figure all that out. Why can't we score on something, somebody that we don't even know anything about?
I mean, if that's... I've looked through at K L M, they're impressive, but you're wrong.
Yeah, I printed on a...
If we hadn't had this for years and years, and the whole system we done, a tower, a new tower, everything, even the mountain, then you'd be looking at all this. All these people can do this job. But it would... They gotta learn what this person, now they know about this thing. And that knowledge is... It just can't beat it.
So, these...
He was involved when the sewer system was put in. He was involved when the new water lines were put in. Everything, whatever. And like I say, he laid out the new addition out there.
No, that's not... I mean, that's very understandable, but these other companies, they... To what degree have they looked into us? Zero?
I don't know. I mean, I know nothing about these...
I think they said we just put that one together.
That's what everyone...
Saying that we need an engineers for... We need a three proposal from an engineer, or three engineers to give us a proposal.
Fill that one all we got.
So, we could go through it.
And the cost of the proposal, does that, that falls on the engineering firm or...
Well, they're giving us their qualifications.
Then, yeah.
These are their qualifications.
Their qualifications.
And their knowledge and their... Here.
Yeah, but...
They gotta lift the people that they do and, I mean, what are you doing? You know, it's got them all in there.
But for the purposes of the grant, for us to demonstrate that we looked at three, three groups of, you know, engineering firms. There has to be a financial component to it too, where, you know, Charlie says, it's not gonna cost you anything, because I already did it, and it's, you know, good to go. And these other guys will say, well, it's gonna cost $10,000 or $3,000, or we're just gonna, we'll look at it.
You look at them and just make up your mind if you want this or that or this, we need to do something. I mean, I'm saying the qualifications, these people here are a lot bigger than sort of... I bet. But Charlie Ray's been business ever since that summer business there, hasn't he? He knows our business up and down. And I would have a problem getting a new engineer and trying to get all this project. I have a problem with it. Because I know Charlie, I know why he does it. I know how much free work he gives us. And these people here, I got nothing against these people.
Well, I, and I'd like to say, you all are clearly qualified.
Oh, yeah. Definitely. But he's overqualified.
But what Missouri Engineering can give us is prior knowledge of the entire system. So, there is no way these other firms can come close to what Missouri Engineering can cost.
My point is that...
And, and both, all three have sterling references and can absolutely do this job.
If it was a brand-new project, a brand-new city, and these three here put in, some of these here might beat Charlie Ray. They're bigger, got more equipment and everything. But what we got in this small town and what he knows, and he's got a good engineer, I know his engineer and everything, but Charlie is one of the smartest guys they ever know for remembering and doing things. He don't worry about a little extra. I mean, he don't add that on.
Yeah. And, and I would say that where we are right now as a city, we have a major problem with finances. And there's just no way we would be able to afford the other two to catch up with what Charlie Ray...
Right. Exactly.
There's just no way. Tens of thousands.
Tens of thousands, you're correct.
Just as I would suggest to boys, that we just might be known that, I mean, we don't question any of these qualifications, but his knowledge, his experience in our system, way beyond that we recommend highly to Charlie Ray, be the engineer firm, then we can let him to who's...
That's, that's, for me, that's, I would say that's fine. In support of the decision, I would add probably one more thing, like, I mean, he's done all this stuff already, and there haven't been any problems with Missouri Engineering in the design of the system, the implementation, the...
There's never been a problem with Missouri.
And I'm assuming in other areas, he's got the same type of reputation too.
Oh, yeah, I know Olympic Billy, they play in those sort of systems, just like Carl, I know him. They are, I know people live there. They're a lot Charlie Ray. Charlie Ray hasn't, to my knowledge, to my knowledge, has never been kicked out of town or failed to come back if he's ever started a project. He's been working for years and years.
Well, I would say that that's interesting, though.
But I don't have to leave for its grade, because I don't have a grade. I don't know, maybe young dude. But I do know...
Makes no sense to me.
Get my four, that qualified everybody there to fit our need. I told them, I know, I told them. Now, who you gotta send these to or how you rate them or what'd you say, but I'll find out. I get... I'm gonna be out of town, but if I get back, or maybe tomorrow, I'll call Charlie Ray while I'm on...
Well, given these five parameters, which are project experience, capacity, past record performance,...
Carl, if you wanna call Charlie Ray tomorrow and get them guys moved there...
I mean, I can tell you exactly how this will work out. Project experience, Charlie Ray's gonna get the highest rating.
Yeah.
Okay? And everybody else will get low ratings, because they don't have...
Because Charlie...
Everything that Charlie Ray has on this project experience. They have experience with projects, but not this one, with respect to this project. Nobody else can meet that one. Capacity and capability of firm, they all don't look any different on their, their capacity and capability. They've all demonstrated that in what they've written. Past record of performance, none of them would be in business if they didn't have a positive past record of performance.
Except for inspectors, the engineering does hardly any work. It's the contractors, they keep an eye on the contractor. The tire, the, the engineering firm does the inspection, and they got it on that. But physical work, the engineer is overseeing the project and the contractor.
Right.
And Charlie knows most all of them here. He has a good relationship with most of our contractors.
Right. But, but I mean, the past record would be equivalent. Firm's individual proximity to the project, there are some that are not located right here in this region. So, they, those would fall below.
I don't even know where they're supposed to go or who's wanting them or, and the grant people or the government's wanting them or who.
Well, well, the idea is that you are using some objective standard to decide who gets the bid. Right?
Yeah.
It's, so you look at them all and say, do they have the experience? Can they do it? Do they have the capability and the capacity to do it? What, what have they done in the past? You know, these are objective things. You know, are they, are they good enough and, you know, do they, do they make it over the bar? You know, if it's just, you know, Buddy Sewer Company is Bonnie's friend and, you know, we wanna use him, even though these guys have more experience. No, that doesn't work for a federal grant. You must have objective criteria that you use to decide who you're going to accept as a contractor. You must have objective criteria that you use to decide who you're going to accept as a contractor.
So how you rate that?
But, but I can tell you, I, I can say, for the rating, the, um, the assigned points to the factors, you know, a rating. Um, you say project experience, Charlie Ray's gonna get everything.
But then rate number three, it's the ponderacy of a bid. Each bidder shall be rated. Make that on this.
One to ten points in regards to the bid reflected to each factor.
Okay, so they have to actually come in, take a look at everything, and provide a cost estimate.
Right.
And scope, and a scope of work, um, the cost estimates, the timeline, all of it.
Well, and that, I mean, Charlie's gonna have to do some work to get the job, that's what I mean, he's done it, but he'll have to do the same thing, in his case, his cost will be lower, because he's already done the homework on it. And then it's gonna be a no brainer, so just.
It's a no brainer.
Well, I mean.
The cost efficiency is gonna be a lot different.
Yeah.
You can't, you know, I mean, that's just.
I'd do something, I won't, I'd like to rate the guys that want to get out of town, I don't go to West Plain.
So, uh.
We know, we know more, but I, we don't know about this.
Yeah, so they should.
Well, if I, could you kind of look over the information that Dave has got put together? Read over the grant, let me see if, what I can come up with, if I can get back with you guys.
Yeah.
And let you know how to get the scoring done. I will try to get it done as soon as possible, I know I can, I can call you.
Yeah, you can call me, yes, yes.
I know, and then the rest, you're free, I can email you, um, on how, kind of rate it.
And, uh, you know, like, to me, it seems like you'll contact them and they'll, uh, do kind of a bid, you know?
Yeah.
And then, on that.
Like I said, let me, let me read over the grant, let me read what the stipulations are, um, so I understand it better. Because I have just kind of been thrown into this.
Yeah.
Um, and then I will, like I said, I will get back with you guys on how to finalize, what all we need, if I need to get bids from each, each of the companies, um.
Yeah, do we really have to get bids?
Do we have to get bids, or?
Decide over there.
Towards decision, should it?
That's why, I mean.
I mean, go ahead, shoot, yeah.
I mean, I don't think personally you should have to have bids.
No.
I mean, if you guys.
That's, that's kind of standard.
Yeah.
No matter, I mean, even if you have someone who puts your toilet, you wanna get a, you know, little bids on it.
Yeah.
Or a door, or whatever, but.
Basically, basically, if they review your cost, you just have to have a cost.
So if you, is that grant documentation lengthy, or is it just like a?
I don't know, I haven't looked at it.
Oh, could you hook us up with a copy of it too, so we can, is that, I'm kind of curious?
If I do want to, I'll have to get hold of Dave, but, I mean, I, I will give you guys a copy of it, if you would like a copy.
I would.
David's been working on that for an year.
Yeah.
A little longer. You know, he kind of like you do right now, he's, he knows more than all of us, because he's been working with Charlie back and forth. And not, not take it away from you, and not take it away from me, it's just the way it is.
Yeah.
But you'll get up to date. We're paying you to learn everything, so. So, well, I guess, we'll do whatever they, we're directed to do, I mean, y'all can grade it any way you want to, if you got a grade sheet there, I don't know.
I don't know exactly how to do that.
I don't need it, but, and I.
It's kind of messed up, I mean, are we supposed to do that for each?
It, it's a no brainer on us, with them here, we need.
Right, we're gonna.
And all this.
I mean, that just says.
Because all days you gotta have three calls.
Right, yeah.
That just says.
I don't think, and, and Charlie Ray's got a good working relationship with him, but all of them. He's worked with me, and all of them. Is that it?
Looks like it.
I don't think so.
I made a motion to adjourn this work session.
You got it.
Second minute.
You got it too, but all right. I go on the West Plain.
How are you feeling?
I got tons.
How do you feel after the big cold weather?
Opened up. Well, it's a combination of both.